Call this meeting to order. Welcome to the April 26th meeting of the Willetts City Council. I'm going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, if we could all stand and maybe Rod, you can lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dolores, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Strong.
President?
Stransky. Yes, and I want to say something. I've got my old hearing aids in, so if I'm a little bit slow, that's the problem. Going to have to speak louder to me today.
Gonzalez?
For a couple of months, maybe.
Yes, President. Thank you. All right, we'll start our meeting with public communications. The City Council welcomes participation in this meeting. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person, so that everyone has an opportunity to address the council. To expedite matters and avoid repetition, whenever any group of persons wishes to address the council on the same subject matter, the mayor may request the group appoint a spokesperson. This item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the City Council, which are not on the posted agenda. Public criticism of the council, commission, boards, and agencies is not prohibited. The City Council can take no action on non-agendized matters. Is there anyone from the public tonight who would like to speak to the council? Hearing none, we will move on to public matters. The first is an update from the Little Lake Fire Protection District. Fire Chief Carter is not here tonight, but we do have his written comments in the packet. Anyone who's interested is encouraged to find them at the city's website. Next up is an update from the Chamber of Commerce.
Hello, everyone. I'm Susan Mahoney from the Willetts Chamber. I'd like today just a couple of minutes to tell you what we've been up to these last couple of months. Our first email to our members went out in March, summarizing membership status and upcoming events. A monthly newsletter to members is in the works. The first mixer was sponsored by Rotary and held April 14th at Willetts Furniture Center. Although attendance was light, everyone was enthusiastic and everyone agreed we needed more mixers. So we'll be holding the next mixer, sponsored by the Lions Club, on May 18th at the Scout Hut in Recreation Grove. Spare time is sponsoring the June mixer, and that date is to be determined. So our goal is to have a mixer every month throughout the year, and the Chamber would be very happy to see any or all of you at these mixers, and if you'd like to sponsor one, just give me a call. Plans for the 41st Car Show on May 28th are well underway. Entry forms and vendor applications have been mailed, and we have commitments from all trophy sponsors. We've posted the Car Show on Visit California and Visit Mendocino event portals, Facebook, Instagram, and our website, and have reached out to other chambers in the area and publications. So as we move forward this year, the Chamber is working to emphasize the bi-local theme to help strengthen our local economy. And strategies that we've talked about for this outreach include possibly having a regular open brown bag lunch meeting to discuss concerns and strategies, a roundtable luncheon for maybe 12 to 15 business owners with a city rep to keep the business community informed of major city matters, revisiting the local first program that the Ukiah Chamber has implemented successfully, and the Willetts Chamber began some years ago. Any suggestions or input about these strategies would be welcomed. The Chamber's had a significant increase in requests to help promote events, and we are proving our ability to do so. The community event organizers are encouraged to contact the Chamber for any support we can give you. There are questions? What we've been up to?
Just a quick question. I am remiss in that I have not gone looking at your website, because last time I did, I think I found...
You were discouraged.
Well, there were several, I think there were two sites, maybe they were, maybe I was not doing it right, but have you updated that yet?
Yeah, it's in the process of getting updated. There have been some major improvements. Part of our problem is that some of the original code was written by a group that the Chamber had contracted with, and so that code is actually having to be rewritten. We can't have access to it, so that's the slowdown.
Because I know the city had a problem where we had two versions for a while up there, and so is that kind of what still?
Well, it's their version, and we'd like it to be ours. Because it's very out of date, so that's the slowdown.
All right.
But hopefully, the newest events, including the Car Show or Furniture Center, are on the air.
I'm pleased to get an informative presentation and just to see the Chamber making a presence and communicating with the council and the public.
Thank you. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is a presentation from Sonoma Clean Power.
My name's Leif Christiansen. I'm an account manager with Sonoma Clean Power, based out of Santa Rosa, and came up here this evening to speak to you about what we do at Sonoma Clean Power and to give you some information about our Evergreen service. So I'll go through the slides. You should have a copy of the presentation in your packet if you want to read along with that. And, uh, there's nothing to, you can listen to me go through the slides or you can look at the slides. But the most important thing to, is I want to give you some background about why we exist and what we do. We were created to help give customers, both residential and business customers of PG&E a choice of who they buy their power from. Before we existed in Sonoma and Mendocino Counties, the only option customers had, in most cases, was to purchase their power from PG&E. And with the creation of Sonoma Clean Power, they now, you all have an option. We serve 230,000 customers in Sonoma and Mendocino Counties combined. We began in 2014 in Sonoma County and then expanded to Mendocino County in 2017. We are part of a network of what are called community choice aggregators, and these were formed by the state of California as a pathway for local governments to create an entity that can procure power and, on behalf, generate power on behalf of residents and businesses. And we do this through creating long-term procurement contracts with various generators. And we partner with PG&E to have that power delivered to customers. So we're only on the generation side. PG&E handles all the poles and wires, they handle all the billing, which really keeps it simple for everyone. And really, it comes down to customers deciding which path they want to go on the generation side. We, uh, so just to, so as I described, we're generating, in some, in most cases, we're purchasing power, in other cases, we're helping develop generation opportunities, and then that flows through PG&E to customers. One of the other benefits of what we're doing, besides giving a choice, is we provide more renewable power than PG&E. It's some of the greatest power you can get, and particularly with the Evergreen offering, that's 100% renewable and it's 24/7. As I mentioned, we are active in Sonoma and Mendocino Counties, with the exception of Healsburg and Ukiah, which is, you know, have their own utilities. So a big part of what we're focused on is providing residents and businesses a way to reduce their carbon footprint in the easiest way possible. We work with a lot of solar customers who have taken their first step or a big step to generate their own power, but still are reliant on the grid for at night or for whatever power their system can't generate. So we provide a pathway for them to have a source of low-carbon electricity, and we also provide an opportunity for customers who can't do solar, for whatever reason, multifamily customers, those that are just in a wooded area or just don't have the rooftop. And as a result of doing this work, besides the flow of greener power into Sonoma and Mendocino Counties, is that we're creating local programs and local resources. That's in the form of actual infrastructure, so additional solar arrays that are built locally, but it's also in programs that help people reduce their energy usage. So we have funding for energy efficiency programs, like the zero-interest loan program that helps residents reduce, upgrade their kitchens and HVAC systems and hot water heaters. We also have a focus on electrification, so giving those customers that want, that either are on propane or are on natural gas and want to go all electric, we give them resources to do that. One of the examples of that is our Advanced Energy Center. So this is based in Santa Rosa. I think of it as the IKEA of electrification. So it's basically a showroom where you can go in and see what a heat pump water, hot water heater looks like, what an HVAC system that runs on a heat pump, what are the options there. And it also helps lay out all the different incentive options that exist, both through Sonoma Clean Power but elsewhere, such as the Inflation Reduction Act, which is providing significant funding and incentives for customers, for residents, to reduce their electric use through adopting heat pump technology. We, um, so when a customer be, when someone becomes a Sonoma Clean Power customer, the default service that they go on is called Clean Start. So this is 50% renewable, and it's just over 90% carbon-free. It's a mix of different resources, and it is at competitive rates as PG&E. One of the things that's in our mission is to create price stability as much as we can, and we frame it as competitive rates, and that doesn't necessarily mean we are below PG&E. We initially started off below PG&E. There was a period that we were about 5% above PG&E. As of February of this, last year, we were the same price as PG&E, you know, dollar for dollar on rates, but in February of this year, we were able to bring our rates down to about 3% to 5% below PG&E on the total bill. And that's something that we intend to stay at as long as possible. We've been able to, our long-term projections are looking like we'll be able to do that at least in the near future. So that is an important part of what we're offering. Now, for those customers that want to go beyond 50% renewable, we also offer a Evergreen service. So this is the 100% renewable service. This is, is at a premium, so it's 2.5 cents per KWH, and it is, in addition to being 100% renewable, it is 24/7, so it's power being provided mostly by geothermal. So the geysers in northeast Sonoma provide 80% of the power for Evergreen. That's a resource that's been in place for, since I think the 60s, and it's, we're able to blend that with local solar arrays. So we've been able to bring in solar projects that are direct, exist because of our Evergreen customers. So when someone signs up for an Evergreen, in addition to getting that, the renewable power, they also are helping essentially vote, putting a vote for renewable energy in the region, and allows us to get a more of a critical mass to build additional infrastructure. So, so far, we have six projects in place. One of them is up here just out, just east of Willetts. It's a 1-megawatt solar facility that began operating in 2019, and it's producing enough power for about 260 homes annually, which is, you know, a modest number, but it's a good start. And that was a direct result of residents and businesses signing up for Evergreen. We also have two more projects in the pipeline from Mendocino County, both around 4 megawatts, and those are in Ukiah and Leightonville. So with that, we are, you know, as I mentioned, the breakdown between those is important to realize, but I think it's that 24/7 component, and I would say even more important, the local component of Evergreen, that I think is a huge selling point. Lastly, I wanted to provide some more specific numbers. You know, so the City Willetts is a Sonoma Clean Power customer on Clean Start, so that's a great place to be. Your opportunity ahead for you is to consider upgrading to Evergreen. The county of Mendocino has upgraded all their facilities. City of Point Arena recently upgraded all city facilities to Evergreen. Most Sonoma County cities in the county are on Evergreen. It's, uh, it, as I mentioned earlier, it really pairs well with solar, even if you are, you know, solar's a great pathway, but this kind of fills in the gaps that you can't necessarily achieve with solar, particularly at night, and for anything you're not able to generate throughout the year. Typically, when a city or county looks to upgrade to Evergreen, typically they, in most cases, they've switched all their facilities over. But I do want to recognize there is another pathway, which is to look at individual facilities, particularly more high-visibility facilities, to upgrade to Evergreen as a first step. And that's probably why I brought, provided a breakdown here. As you can see, you know, City Hall, this facility we're in, Community Center, is a great first step, I would, I would say. And in terms of an annual cost, it's, you know, just over $3,300 a year. That puts you into the, on the Evergreen path. And certainly, there's other, other facilities to consider. This, also included here, the carbon reduction that comes with that upgrade. So in the case of this, of City Hall, that would be reducing your, your carbon, pounds of carbon per year of 8,000 pounds. So, you know, we're looking at, you know, close to four tons of carbon you'd be producing annually. So that's, that covers my overview of Sonoma Clean Power and Evergreen. Certainly, I'm glad to answer any questions you have.
Any councilmembers have questions?
I have one. I mean, I guess I struggled when all this came on. I get the idea that we're trying to do better for our planet, but when I have a lot of elderly customers, sometimes they struggle to try and tell them to move from the basic plan to the next plan, and tell them, "You'll feel better about the planet, but you'll have less money in your pocket." Do you have another argument that I could give them? Because when you don't have any money, it's a little hard. I mean, if I had the money to go solar hypothetically versus the guy that doesn't have the money to go also, really, they can look at it. And I'm not trying to ambush you, I'm just trying to wrap myself around, how do I tell my constituents, "Go this route"? You know, I don't know. If you have any...
No, I think it's a really good question, and it's one that I wrestle with quite often. You know, ultimately, my job is to help advise customers on what's the best pathway for them. And in many cases, particularly in our current environment with inflation and rising costs of energy overall, it's a, it's a hard sell. And one thing that I've really appreciated as an organization is that we've looked at, how do we keep rates as low as possible? So the fact that just our, our basic plan, a Clean Start, is 5% below PG&E on total bill, is a huge step and one that I'm hopeful we can maintain, because that is, that's a huge priority for our organization. I really see Evergreen as, as an option for those that, where it makes sense for them, either from a deeper level philosophically or, and/or financially, they have some extra resources, and this is where they want to prioritize them. And for some customers, it, it might not make sense. And it's really up for each individual to make that choice, to see what is best for them. And, you know, my role as an account manager to educate customers and help them make the most educated the best decision for them. So I think, I think your point is a really good one, and one that we need to be thoughtful about. And, you know, I think there's also a compromise, I think, particularly in the case, in the case of City Willetts. I mean, pulling the trigger on, you know, upgrading your, all your facilities at once, it's a decent price tag, particularly for looking at already doing solar and you're trying to prioritize budget. But I would say that there's, there is an opportunity to make incremental step in that, in that direction, and that's why I recommend doing, focusing on just one facility, like City Hall, and have that be your first step.
Thank you. One more thing, more for the television public. The address of the demonstration facility, is it Santa Rosa, you said?
Yes, Advanced Energy Center.
And where is that at?
It's right on Fourth Street, right downtown. It's just down from the Russian River Brewing Company, so just about a block and a half from that, and, yeah...
Do you know the address by chance?
I don't have the address...
But it would say Sonoma Clean Power.
Yeah, look up Sonoma Clean Power, Advanced Energy Center, and our website will give you all the information you need. You can make an appointment, or you can show up without an appointment. It's open on Saturdays, as well as during the week. And, yeah, encourage folks to check it out. Advanced Energy Center, check it out.
Thank you.
Look it up online.
I'm done.
It's 7:41, Fourth Street.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Matt?
Well, I have been at the Advanced Energy Center, and it's really more like Disneyland for energy issues than it is of, like IKEA, I think, because it really gives you a lot of ideas about ways you can incrementally, in your own home or business, go more, more green and carbon-free. So it's very exciting to just, you know, see what's available. And I also wanted to point out that Sonoma Clean Power's rates would be a lot less than PG&E if it weren't for the fact that by contract or by, you know, by law, they have to be paying sort of the back debts of PG&E. So all of the back prior debts of PG&E are allocated in part to Sonoma Clean Power, but I think it's really wonderful that they can keep their rates just for the electric portion of your bill below PG&E's rate. Obviously, that won't help if it's your gas bill instead, and Sonoma Clean Power doesn't do that. I would also just really love it if the city would consider, and maybe we could put this on a future agenda fairly soon, to consider upgrading to the Evergreen program for just City Hall, at least as a starter, because I think it would show a good example to, to the community that we're doing it, and a lot of other cities are doing it already. It's a, it's a great incremental step towards doing our part for reducing our greenhouse gases. So I, and I think it would also be nice to sort of see the before and after when we do get solar installed. It'll, it'll reduce all of our electric bills a whole lot, but I think to, to start by going onto Evergreen would be a really nice gesture, if you want to call it a gesture. And it's not that expensive to just do the City Hall.
I would support putting that on the agenda for further discussion. And then I had a question for you. So when I first got on the City Council, there was this perception that Sonoma Power costs more money, and it sounds like it did in fact, maybe around that time, cost more money. What year did we start to see things shift in terms of, now you're talking about 3% to 5% less versus, what year did you kind of see that?
Yeah, I would have to go back to, if you would like, I'm more than glad to provide you a breakdown by year by year, but the general trend is, when we started in 2014, we were initially below. After a couple of years, for various reasons, the prices went up. So I'm not sure, 2017, when Mendocino joined, where we were at, it might have been slightly above. And then in 2000, at least 2021, we were around that 5% or near that, but it slowly dropped since then. Last year, we were the same price, so no, no difference. And then this is the, now, this year, we started back to 5%, or 3% to 5% below. So it's kind of done this over the years. Now, we'll say, one thing that gives me confidence that we'll stay at or below PG&E moving forward is that we've accumulated a reserve. So one of the things that I, I think is one of the real selling points about the model that we work under is that we don't have shareholders. So PG&E, they, a lot of their focus is how to, you know, manage their, their share price and give back to their shareholders. We reinvest those funds back into programs, as well as into price stability. So moving forward, because we've accumulated, and our budgeted, our budget forecast shows that our financial reserves will grow to a point by the end of this year, that we'll be able to maintain lower rates over the long term. So that price stability is something that is built into our mission. It's just taken us a while to get to the reserves. We need to do that, but we are very close to getting to that point, and that will, I think, help in the future.
Yeah, thank you. That was, that's important, because I think a lot of people still have a perception that by being in the Sonoma, that they're paying, they're continuing to still pay more than they would if it were PG&E.
You know, I should, I should add that I think one of the biggest confusions is that they think we are an added cost on the bill, partly because we show up as a separate line, and they think, "Oh, I don't want this." However, we are not an added cost. We, if you leave us, you go back to PG&E, you're, you're charged actually a higher amount in this case, but the, where the bill's set up, it's not totally obvious. So sometimes it's just, there is a misperception, perception as well, that the bill is created.
Just one other thing, besides all the advantages that Leif has also already mentioned, that Sonoma Clean Power not only doesn't have shareholders that are wanting you to return profit to them, but we're also run by the public, basically. It's, it's a compact of all of the cities and the counties that are part of it, and the decisions are made by the Board of Directors, which represents our cities and counties. So they're really looking at the public interest rather than the shareholders' interest. I think that's a really, it shows in the way that Sonoma Clean Power does business. They're really an advocate for the consumers, for customers, for the public. And they, they also advocate in Sacramento and at the Public Utilities Commission for those same issues.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments? So it sounds like we will have this added to a future agenda for discussion, further discussion, and thank you very much for your presentation. Very informative.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate your time.
Yes, absolutely. So does the care program, is that part of Sonoma Clean Power, or is that just PG&E? Because that would also help out with a lot of residents, especially that are on a fixed income. It gives, what, 15% off?
Yes, so...
So if somebody has, you know, a disability, or you can go ahead and explain, but that's a selling point as well.
Yeah, so both PG&E and Sonoma Clean Power customers are eligible for care. There's no differentiation between which path the customer takes. Care is kind of a separate thing. Sonoma Clean Power does not have its own version of care, since our customers already can access the larger program. So that is, certainly, we encourage customers to join care if they're eligible, and that, as you said, helps bring down the cost of their power overall.
You definitely have to advocate for yourself, though.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, moving on. We have no ordinances to enact this evening, so the next item up is the consent calendar. There's one item on the consent calendar this evening, and that is the council minutes from April 12th.
Motion to approve?
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Does anybody from the public have any comments to make about the consent, the minutes from last council meeting? Hearing none. Dolores, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Merrick?
Yes, thank you. We have a building activity report for March of 2023 in our packet. This requires no action from the City Council, but is of public interest. Encourage you to take a look at that. Commissions, agencies, and authorities, the council is not meeting this evening as the planning commission or successor agency. So we'll move on to our city manager reports and recommendations. First up is a resolution to approve professional services agreement with Armstrong Consultants, Consultants for Professional Planning and Engineering Services for the municipal airport.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is an item that is, the, the city is, needs to find a new consultant to help and help and guide us through decisions and improvements impacting our airport facility. For several years now, we've been utilizing the services of Mead and Hunt. They have serviced well. They have covered a lot of ground with the city with recent improvements that the council has been made aware of, with the runway, tarmac, some of the hangar improvements, and just the overall operations of that facility. The contract with Mead and Hunt expired about a year or so ago, and knowing that we still had ongoing projects, we have continued through a series of extensions associated with task orders to two principal projects that we have ongoing right now, which are the new hangars. We went through the process of proposing an RFP to solicit responses, and the FAA requires a division so that one entity, one response could be fairly evaluated on both sides of the coin. Where you, basically FAA provides money for planning and development stages, and then construction and project implementation. Usually, you have planning, and then you have construction activities or engineering. So we put out an RFP. So we put out an RFP that identified the need for both services. We had essentially two responses. We had Mead and Hunt, who would continue providing just planning services and managerial oversight assistance. And then Armstrong, which provided response for both planning and then engineering and construction. We re-staffed the airport team, internally evaluated both proposals from Armstrong and in Mead and Hunt. We decided to bring in Mead and Hunt for an onsite evaluation and interview, essentially, of their key personnel that would have the most interaction with staff. Meeting lasted well over an hour. We had a good conversation.
Did you mean to say you invited Armstrong in for that meeting?
Yes.
Okay, I think you said Mead and Hunt.
Excuse me, Armstrong. We invited Armstrong in. It lasted over an hour. We had a good dialogue. The comfort zone was there. We recognized that both, they understood our need, they understand the needs of a smaller general aviation airport. Going through some of the items that are associated with the RFP and some of our concerns on what the projects that we're facing currently and that are on the horizon, we asked them to provide a service agreement, professional services agreement. And that's why we use their template, because there's references in there to FAA provisions and some federal provisions, and it was just easy to use that and then going back and forth and modifying two sets of documents. Saying that, basically, the recommendation is to proceed with Armstrong. We have two representatives from the firm with us tonight to answer any questions that the council may have. But at the end of the day, staff would truly appreciate the council's action on this. We believe this is going to take us in the right direction with our airport as we move forward with several key projects. And I think Armstrong, the talent and the expertise they have demonstrated to us to date is going to be, provides some great assistance for us.
Thank you. Yes.
So will we still be using Mead and Hunt for some of the hangar stuff? Or is that all those projects ended and are we looking at just the different?
We're trying to discuss that right now. We have explained to Armstrong personnel where we are with the projects. Essentially, Mike Smith's hangar, we already approved the lease, we already have the ground lease for the facility, we already have FAA approval for the development proposal. They're working through the permitting process right now. So that project is well along on its track for completion. REACH is, we just got the FAA approval for the project. So we're kind of about six months behind on that project. So we made this transition to Armstrong with the REACH project. And with Mike Smith, we may just keep Mead and Hunt.
It almost looked from the agenda summary that we were using, one was overlapping with the other.
We have to figure it out. Mead and Hunt understands that this is actually in the best interest for the city to move forward. They understand that. They have been, like I said, they served us well. They continue to serve us well. We had a great relationship with them. There's an opportunity for us to develop a new relationship with a new consultant.
And then lastly, as we approach budget, then you'll have a better idea of what we're looking at as opposed to, or I think when I read the agenda summary, it was basically, this is what we spent on Mead and Hunt, and you were projecting about the same.
What we're doing with Armstrong is basically, and it's actually a good thing, is that if we just, one of our staff members contacts them with an inquiry if something's going on at the airport, they'll provide us the guidance and insight and information, basically with no fees associated with it. They will start billing us once there's a defined task order, so that's how they track projects. The agenda summary notes basically is a rough estimate where we are now currently with Mead and Hunt. And we had several large projects, and that's kind of, it's an anomaly associated with the budget. But we believe that the tasks, the projects due by task order through budget purposes is the correct way to go.
Any other council members have questions? Would either of you gentlemen like to?
We might be trying to talk. At least.
Coming up to our podium here.
They have to be able to talk, right?
Good evening. My name is Mike Dickin. I'm the Western Territory Manager for Armstrong. I'm based in Reno, Nevada. Dave Dietz is a senior planner with Armstrong, formerly with Mead and Hunt. So he actually knows your airfield better than I do.
Ironically, I've done all your planning for 15 years.
And so we're thrilled if you decide to support staff and approve us as your consulting firm. I'm 27 years as an airport manager, 33 years in aviation, and 35 years as a private pilot. I love the business. I love everything about aviation, and I'm excited to have the opportunity to spend some time here. We are Western Territory for Armstrong is basically the entire state of Nevada and Northern California from our southernmost client is Sacramento McClellan Airfield. And then move north, we've got, I think we're now at just 15 airports in the state of California and north of Sacramento. We have you surrounded with clients. And so happy to answer any questions that you might have about our company. We're celebrating our 50th anniversary this year. We are airport exclusive. We do not do municipal planning or engineering. We are exclusively airport focused. We have many, many, many clients like the city of Willets. We have some bigger, we have some smaller, but you folks are kind of what our company has been built on with regards to relationships.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think our city manager has spoken highly of you, and we trust, I trust, anyway, a city manager's judgment. It sounds like this is a good thing, so no reason to doubt it.
More importantly, I'm looking at Kathy, she's the designated airport manager. She's the one who's going to have the most contact with Mike as our client manager. There's a comfort zone there. As you recognize, we have put a lot of resources and effort into that airport in the last several years, and we will continue to do so. And we also have some minor concerns up there. There's no way of sugarcoating it. There is an FAA complaint that was submitted to the FAA regarding how we manage the airport. And we have weathered and came out on previous similar complaints through FAA guidance that we're doing a great job up there. We're doing a reasonably good job. We can do better. And I believe with Armstrong's supervision, we'll get there.
Nice, thank you.
And also, I'm looking at Dusty and Andrea, they, you know, they're import, part of the import team, and we got Manny. You know, Manny is kind of the glue that holds us all together.
Are you asking under your manager's reports for us to approve the resolution this evening?
Yes, there's a supporting resolution for the action.
If there are no further questions from council, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the professional services agreement with Armstrong Consultants.
I will second that.
Before we call for a roll call, does anybody from the public have any comments about this item? Nope. Okay, bring it back up here and call for the vote.
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming all the way to Willets. Did you fly?
It's a great drop.
No, I learned to fly in the mountains, but I will not fly a single-engine airplane over this.
Thanks, guys.
Well, be careful driving. One-on-one can be a threat.
Well, if my engine stops on one-on-one, I pull over. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a great evening. All right, Brian, any verbal reports?
Two, and I just want to recognize, I see Kenon, who was kind of hiding back there. He's also a critical member of the airport team too, so I want to give him a shout out there. Two verbal items. One is I want to give an update on Willet's Frontier Days, our perspective of what we've been doing to accommodate the event that everyone's anticipating. It's going to be a wonderful, amazing event. We have in the final stages of retaining a portable wash station units. Help me out here, Kathy. 10 units.
We have two trailers of eight restrooms in each one, and then we got two more with ADA that has three. So we're right at about 20 restrooms, which is a far more than we have down there, which is.
And these are units that are on trailers. They have ventilation units associated with them. They have individual wash stations. They have lights.
They have air conditioning, the whole bit, yeah.
They have the catalog of portable.
Yes.
Do you have to walk upstairs to get to them?
They do. But that's why we did get two ADA units for that reason. But yeah, they're all self-contained, and they will come in and pump them out once a day and.
They actually, I just used a facility like that up in Crescent City, and it's like going into a, like a bathroom in a house.
Yeah.
Honestly, I was curious. I saw where they were at their grocery outlet up there. They had them outside, and they had the ADA ones, and they had that there. It was kind of neat.
Brian, when discussing some about the Frontier Days, if you could also each time maybe mention the component of who's financially supporting it, because I think that there's some misgnomes out in the community that Frontier Days is having to, has the burden of these additional costs. And then there's also some misgnomes that the taxpayer is picking up some of these costs. So maybe differentiating each time we're talking about expenses.
Right now, that's a good point. So right now, we are covering all costs. We are coordinating with Remif, our insurance trust coverage provider. They have confirmed that they will reimburse the city for the expenses because it's, once again, it's our facility. And we're essentially extending the usage of that facility to Willet's Frontier Days. So we're taking on that responsibility to maintain and provide the facilities they need to accommodate their event. So right now, we're covering the expenses. Starting May 1st, that's Monday, next Monday's date is May 1st. Public Works Crew is going to start the demolition of the existing damaged roof on the Margarita Shed. And the schedule for that is to remove the damaged items within about a day and a half to two, and then turn around and install the temporary roof. And talking with Davy, the building official, and Kenon, we are utilizing a different technology. We're using essentially glue lamps to span the complete distance of the roof to expedite process or construction, so we don't have to put in center piers or anything like that. It will be structurally sound, temporary roof, and we hope to be, hopefully, off the scene by the end of next week.
So that portion of that project, is that going to be reimbursable by the insurance? Or is that, okay, so again, the city will front the money, it's reimbursable? No cost to taxpayers, no cost to Frontier Days?
You know, that, let's be honest, it's an insurance trust, where it's numerous municipalities in Sonoma, oh, well, actually, the whole state now with Sierra. There is going to be a cost to taxpayers, but indirectly.
A rate might.
There'll be indirect costs in the form of potential rate hikes, but.
And both of these projects are temporary stopgap before the bathrooms can be restored.
And we have the complete plan set, and we'll do the formal bidding process to get the best and most reasonable contracted response for the project.
For both the restroom and then also the Margarita?
And then for the permanent restrooms that will be coming down after the event, who's paying for those? Because I think there's some misgnomes out there, so I just want to make it very clear.
Once again, that is going to be a city responsibility under, in some insurance provisions. We're still working out the, we haven't got the final claims adjustment report submitted yet or received.
Is there any expectation that Frontier Days will have to put in money?
We have not sought that. We are, the instruction I received from staff administrative level, we're not seeking that. Now, the council hasn't advised staff to pursue that. That is something that could be discussed at a later date.
Thanks for the clarification.
And is there potential to look at FEMA funds for the ultimate project?
They have been tagged into the suite of expenses that we have incurred during those, that declaration event from 27th to January 31st. We're still working through it. It's a very lengthy, laborious process working with FEMA. They verify everything. The tree removal that we did immediately, and then recently, is all going to be subject to their verification.
Right. Thank you.
Yep. Like I said, we, not myself, but staff has been following through, doing all the legwork, Davy, Kathy, Kenon. It's been, you know, it's been additional responsibility, but we're making it work.
Thank you.
So there's one other item. Once again, I want to recognize staff, today was Administrative Assistant Day. We had a small luncheon affair for our staff, and we recognize the importance they do in the service and the capacity they provide us. So it was well received, and I just want to call out the effort that they have put into supporting not only staff, but the council and the community itself.
We tried to get them to come tonight.
Yeah, Kathy wanted to replace us, and I was like.
So strange they didn't want to come to a council meeting. It's their workday.
Sooner or later, they'll have to come.
Yes, they will.
So that's what I have.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, that takes us on to department recommendations. The action item tonight is a resolution awarding a contract to Superior Tank Company to design, fabricate, and install a 250,000-gallon contact tank for the groundwater resiliency improvement project phase two. Presenting member tonight is Andre Trincato, project manager.
Good evening. I'm presenting a recommendation for an award of contract to Superior Tank for the design, fabrication, and installation of a 250,000-gallon steel bolted, bolted steel contact tank for phase two of the groundwater resiliency improvement project. The procurement of the tank includes the foundation design, and Laco Associates has been providing engineering services for the project, preliminary engineering as well as construction engineering for phase one. And they, they are working on the site improvement plans for phase two of the project. So this is, the procurement of the tank is an initial step towards the overall phase two of the project. The design of, the design of the tank and the foundation will become incorporated within the overall site improvement plans, which will include, will be bid separately, but it will include plumbing, a pump station, grading, as well as the foundation construction. So the, what I'm presenting tonight is an award of contract for the initial step, which will be the tank. We'll get that on order, and they'll submit the design, and then they'll, it'll go into fabrication. It will take approximately six months for the tank to be ready to be installed. And meanwhile, Laco Associates will be, will bid the site improvement project, and those improvements will be installed. And then the tank, when it's ready, will come and be installed on those improvements. So the overall cost of the contract for the tank is $319,986,000. And both Rod Wilburn and myself are available if there are any questions.
So I remember when we were first discussing about the tank, and I know that the cost of the tank was going to be more than we originally anticipated. How much more do we protect either this phase of the project or the overall? What are you seeing in terms of budget overruns, you might say?
So the anticipated budget is, well, we budgeted $750,000 for the entire phase two of the project. And after consulting with Rod, once the bids were received, he anticipates the overall project will remain within budget.
Oh, interesting. Well, that's good to hear. All right. There you go.
I'm concerned about the foundation. How high is it going to be above the ground or is it going to be right on the ground?
That's a great question for Rod.
Leave that here.
There's always a foundation question.
There's always a foundation question.
Right. It'll just be right on the ground. It's like a ring foundation, probably about five feet wide. It'll be, might be a little bit above the ground, but you wouldn't be able to tell.
Fifty feet, right?
Just so you can get drained away from the.
I'm concerned about the earthquakes. I mean, that's, mine will get right down to it.
Right. They take that into account with the foundation design and the tank design as well. So based on the risk factor, they'll allow a certain amount of headspace or open space, because the earthquake, it would potentially do is make the water slosh back and forth, and that would compromise the tank more so than the foundation. So one of the questions, or just to jump back to the cost-wise, initially, we were talking about welded steel tank, and this is a bolted steel. The welded steel tank was like over a million dollars. So we opted to go with a bolted steel tank. Same structural integrity. It's a little less expensive, because there's not a whole bunch of welding and painting on site. It's all done at the shop. So the AWWA requirements for the design of the foundation are specific to where it is and what the seismic risk factors are. So that's accounted for in that design. And the tank company, that's what they do. So they do this all over the state.
And we have not figured out who's going to do the groundwork yet? They didn't say that. I didn't hear anything about that.
That will be bid separately as a phase, as a second part. So the site improvement plans will be.
Andrea, could you come up here? I'm sorry, for the camera. Yeah.
Oh, God.
No, right here.
Yeah, you can both be.
Can you hear okay?
Yeah.
Are they talking loud enough?
Yeah, I can hear it.
So this is the initial step, and Laco Associates is preparing plans and specifications for the overall site improvement plans. This tank will get incorporated in that. And once those plans and specifications are ready, that will get bid as a separate project, and the contractor will be selected as part of that bid.
So the tank company is the best, they're the best party in this agreement to have designed the foundation. So until we have the foundation design, which is eight to 10 weeks out, so in eight to 10 weeks, we'll get the foundation design from Superior Tank, and we'll put all of that into the plan set for the site improvements. And the, I should say, whoever the contractor is that's chosen for the site improvements will construct the foundation per those plans. So we're on hold, we're on hold finalizing the site improvement plans until we have that information. So like Andrea said earlier, that'll all get incorporated into the plan set in a couple of months. So we're probably looking at an October, November construction timeline for actually when the tank is actually going to be in and in operation.
And the tank is actually on the inside and outside is coated?
Yes.
And what it happens, and this is, I don't have any idea about this. So when the pieces go together, does there a adhesive that goes in between them?
You know, I don't know the answer to that question. You mean like at the seams?
I think there's a, some type of membrane. I think Scott and I were talking about it one day. There's like a foam membrane. So when the, the bolts come together, there's like a flange. So one piece sits in the other, and then in the sandwich, there is a foam membrane that accesses the ceiling.
Okay.
Scott and I talked about this one day, so that's what I know.
These are just things that came to my mind, and I just, you know, thank you. Thank you, Brian.
May I ask some questions, and then Larry?
Yeah, a couple of questions. One is that when you go through the bidding process for the site preparation part, that will come to the council for that contract. And the total we're expecting with this one and the site preparation will still be within that budget, the 750,000?
I think so. Yeah, I believe so. There's not, it's already, there's already a pad out there. There's not a whole lot of grading that has to happen. Just building the foundation. There's already pipes to connect to on either end. There's a little bit of new piping that has to happen, because it's already, it's basically where the groundwater treatment plant, the treated water comes out of the groundwater treatment plant and goes into the distribution system. Between those two points, the tank is going to sit, it's going to be located right in between those two points. And essentially, we're going to take this pipe and plug it into the, into the tank, and then on the other side, it's going to come out, and we're going to have a couple duplex pump, booster pumps, to better control the pressure into the system.
Well, that was one of my, one of my other questions was, I had originally thought that the tank was going to supply some pressure to putting that water into the distribution system. But that's not necessarily, you're not counting on the tank, gravity flow, you're having pumps as well.
Right. It will provide some, based on the height of the tank, but we do need booster pumps, because right now, it's pumped from the Elias well, which is a mile out there. So it goes from the Elias well, through the groundwater treatment plant, and into the distribution system off the single pump out at the Elias well. And it's, it works, it's just not the most efficient way to do it. And right now, there's no, in this, when it's contact, it's a chlorine contact tank, there's no, there's what that, the intention, the purpose of a chlorine contact tank is to give chlorine a little bit of time to do its job, to disinfect the water. And it also lets it settle down, so it's not quite as harsh as what comes right out of the treatment. The concentration of chlorine will come down a little bit. Typically, it's just anywhere from, you know, five to five, 10 minutes is an acceptable contact time. It's just, it helps, it helps with the treatment process, and it helps with what the customer gets on the other end as well.
And the final question I had is, is most of this, or all of this, still being covered by grants that you got years ago?
No, those have been expended. And we're waiting for reimbursement for, that covered phase one of the groundwater resiliency improvement project. And, you know, some of that has been the planning and preliminary engineering, so some of that has benefited this project. But this will be made for by the water pumps, and it's within the budget.
Okay, thank you.
You may or may not know the answer, but, so we do this in 2023. What's the lifespan of this tank? When would we have to touch it, or do some maintenance to it down the road?
Fifty years, probably. There'll probably be some maintenance in between.
Basically, long after Jerry's gone, we'll be.
Paint the inside.
We're not going to have to budget again in five years.
I won't be worried about it then.
So other bolted steel tanks within the system? I'm just trying to think of the characters.
Well, it's hard, because technology changes, the way the steel is treated at the plant, the way it's coated. And the technology changes, and the requirements change. So it's a little different than a bolted steel tank was 20 years ago.
Good point.
Yeah.
Any other questions from council? Anybody from the public have any questions about this? Tamara?
I just want to say.
Oh, I'm sorry. You have to come to the podium and say your name for the record, please.
Thank you, Mayor Connie, and Council Tamara Allenies, City of Willits resident. I'm just very grateful that the council is moving forward with a water project like this. You always want to diversify your water supply, and this is a great project for the city. So thank you.
Anybody else from the public? Nope? Okay. Bring it back up here, and I will entertain a motion.
Go ahead, you're first, Jerry, and I'll second.
All right. I would like to move, go with the resolution for the tank.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt the resolution awarding a contract.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. A motion and a second. Don't worry, may we have a roll call, please? Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Thank you, Andrea.
Yes.
And Mayor Connie? Yes. All right. Department monthly reports. So we have a big stack of reports, and I'm sure we've all read them, but we will go around the room and see if any staff members have anything they'd like to add to their written reports. And we'll start with Kathy.
I do not, Brian covered it all earlier. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer, but I have nothing.
Okay. Council, any questions for Kathy?
No, I was just thinking, like was stated earlier, that the airport really has been receiving some extra love these last few years. And you can tell it's very much a team approach, rather than just one individual trying to get things taken care of up there. So good job, team.
All right. Community development. Dusty, have you anything to add?
Yeah, a couple things. We're going to, the few highlights.
I'm going to make sure the microphone isn't in front of you.
Certainly, one, one big highlight since we developed this report is Caltrans sign coordinator responded, and.
Dig this.
They're telling us that we are going to have a, an estimate and plan together for installation of our downtown Willits signage. So after four, five years, whatever it was, who's counting? It looks like we're finally getting some traction and moving forward with that. It does look like it didn't make it into last year's, or this current budget. So we'll work with the finance department to, and report back to council, but.
Is that the one on the corner of Highway 20, or?
So it would include signage, letting travelers know the direction to downtown Willits at locations on the north off ramp, northern off ramp, as well as, again, just the simple downtown Willits this way, that would go in the, what we commonly refer to as the Highway 20 park. So if you're traveling from Fort Bragg on 20, you'll have a, again, just the standard green and white Caltrans highway signage. But again, what I'm hearing from local businesses is that, boy, if we can get one more family eating or shopping in our business, even that would make a little bit difference, that we'd appreciate it. So hopefully, you know, this effort, you know, goes towards that. And that's not to be confused with some broader, more exciting plans we have for signage at the Highway 20 park. So I don't want to confuse that matter. But yeah, there would be one relatively small size, whatever Caltrans identifies, that was okay with that standard.
I was just thinking, since we're in, maybe we could ask for some colors, some graphics?
I think, I think we're going to have to do that on our own. But we certainly appreciate the response, and I was grateful to be able to share that sentiment with you today. Just kind of going through here to see if there's any other updates. Yeah, we finally got some traction on the flood emergency response plan as well. So everything's setting up to finally bring that before council on May 24th. There's, it's just been an issue with the consultant on that one. And we're also going to be bringing forward a discussion and update on the land use element to the council meeting on May 10th. And we're developing a staff report and a presentation along with our consultants. So looking forward to sharing some information, and we'll be able to give a recap on some of the work done by the advisory committee, as well as some good feedback we got at the open house, maybe it was two or three weeks ago. And we'll be very clear as to the type of guidance we're looking for from council with public feedback. And, you know, there'll be more meetings, so it's not the final run at it. Again, we are being very aggressive with our timeline to get this done. This is typically a three-year project that we're trying to wrap up in one year. Again, that timeline is being directed by the fact that we have three grants that are paying for this project. And it will be important to, you know, share information with this council and get direction to make sure we're on the right track, so to speak. So look forward to presenting that to council as well. We have a follow-up interview with a prospective code compliance officer tomorrow. So this is someone that has a great amount of experience, and did very well in their initial formal interview. So grateful for them wanting to, and being willing to come up here and meet some of the team, and get a better feel for some of the challenges we have up here. And likewise, we can get a better feel for their personality and their approach, and how we think they might fit in with an extremely talented team up here. And we are actively recruiting a senior city planner, and hopefully, we'll have some good news on that front soon as well. So other than that, certainly happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Any questions for Dusty? Larry?
I was really kind of concerned with the two state representatives that, where the rails and trails came, and neither one of them were here. Did they just kind of shirk us off, or, I mean, this is part of their thing is to, you know, for the funding and whatever. And I thought it was a nice turnout of people, and they weren't here to hear all the comments. Anyhow, and my last thing is, what are we going to do about the trenches? Because there's a real problem in Ukiah, I understand. I haven't walked up and down the thing, but we talked about the lights, you know, going across the road, but I understand from the people that walk it, that there's a real problem with it in Ukiah.
Yeah, so, you know, depending on who I talk to at Ukiah, I get different flavors for what level of issues they're having with the houseless population down there. It's certainly not a concern that you have alone, Councilmember Stransky. It's something that staff recognizes as a legitimate concern. It's been probably the number one question or concern brought up by members of the public when we have those meetings, including the one that you just referenced there. And in talking to other jurisdictions that have similar trails, they said, yeah, I think staff is on, has the right approach, in that the more folks you can get using that trail, they're sort of activating that space, the less likely you are to see those types of issues. So there's a non-infrastructure component to this grant that we'll be getting to as we get into the construction phase, which, again, is slated to start next year. And, you know, part of that effort is going to be working with the school district, hospitals, other stakeholders, planning events around the trail, promoting the trail, and trying to expand the usership of the trail. The other design components we have are lighting and security cameras. Those are things that specifically the police department requested correctly when we were first going after the grant application. So we look forward to installing those improvements along the trail. Yeah, that's essentially the proactive plan on that matter.
Thank you.
Jerry?
You know, along those lines, whether it be Public Works or the police department, that we, at some point in the budgeting process, whether it's part of that or part of the budget, that we look at like an APB or some sort of utility vehicle, that they can access to clean or pick up garbage, so that, you know, they're not having to drive out there in a pickup, or, I don't know what's, how alternative design will work, it's simply with police, if they need to get out there, make it easy to access, or get folks out there. The other question I have, any more news on the old Jack in the Box? Is that still, been vacant for a while, so?
Correct.
And rumors are circulating.
Yeah, the rumor is that it's a, that a Starbucks wants to go in there. We still haven't received any formal information towards that request. There have been conversations with third parties that are hired by businesses like Starbucks to look into what the land use approval processes, or otherwise, you know, gather information from folks like city staff to, and, you know, they don't want to tell you what the perspective of business is, but you can kind of asking questions, you can get a feel for it, and everything points to that. But yeah, no building permits, no planning applications.
Okay. Madge?
On a separate subject, I guess.
Yeah, on a separate subject, I guess. Is there anything new on the vacant commercial building enforcement process?
Yeah, it's been about a week and a half since I got an update from the department staff on that. But, the, the last update was that we still, I think, had, I think, one, one property owner that wasn't responding to the request to register their building. So, again, as we talked about last time, we don't want to turn that into a code enforcement matter, but that would be sort of the, the step that, that we would need to take to essentially force their way onto the registration. Again, it's, it's $50, it's a pretty simple form to fill out. There's, we've made lots of opportunities to, to get out of that $50 requirement, but, yeah, and, and again, just to, and this isn't anything I haven't shared with Counsel before, but the, the, it appears, everything's pointing to, if you're willing to fix up your commercial space and actively seek a tenant, then you have a tenant and you are renting it. If your plan is to allow your building to deteriorate for potentially a tax benefit, and it is in no way, in any shape and form, to be leased out for any type of commercial use, those are the ones that maintain that chronic vacancy that we're trying to deal with and introduce that community cost. And-
I would like to make sure that the, well, that the carrot, and then we can shed the stick after the carrot, that if, if there are people that are like what you're describing, that there's some additional steps that we can take.
Madge is ready for the stick.
I think there's a lot of us that are, yeah.
If you're not cooperative, what are you going to do?
And just a, a friendly reminder, and, and Counsel may recall, but, you know, that $50 becomes in the thousands after a few years, so.
But if we can't collect the 50, how are we going to collect the thousands?
That's my concern.
There is action.
Yeah.
All right, any more questions for Dusty? Thank you very much. Move on to Engineering.
Yeah, I just have a couple of quick updates. The West Mendocino project, the, the plant specs are currently under review. We're anticipating it going out to bid, if all goes well, next week. The Roof Project, unfortunately, contractor that was selected for that VAS roof thing fell through. And we turned around an informal bid. The, the bid has been out for a number of weeks, and we, we are planning the bid opening for May 3rd. So, we expect to have another ward, award of contract to come forward at the first meeting in May. Working on the annual report for groundwater, and anticipating that to come forward at the May, or planning to, to have it come forward at the May 24th meeting. And I reported in, in the monthly report that we were having some technical issues with our groundwater monitors, and staff has been able to repair those, so they are operational again. One of them is, we need to work with the instrumentation guy to get, consultant to get it calibrated, but we're, we're back up and running. And the RFP for the, the solar project, we're, we're planning to get that out tomorrow.
Which solar project?
I'm sorry, the City Hall Solar Project.
Any questions for Andrea? Jerry?
Regarding the pavement preservation program, this year, we had a lot of, right, and I've said we have a lot more, what do you call those?
Potholes.
Potholes, thank you. Is that going to influence some of your, as you study the roads and decide if you get what love? Is that, or is that just part of Public Works' annual, fill the potholes, as we be?
We, we make rounds monthly on areas that have been prone to issues.
I mean, we're not the only ones. I mean, driving down 101, it's like you're dodging potholes everywhere.
I was in Ukiah the other day, and it was, it looked like the street was, like, it was a war-torn street and-
Yeah.
You know, I felt a little better. But, they do, they do pop up like mushrooms after the rains. So, one thing that, that is beautiful that works is we've worked with Andrea and Scott to get a, or go meet some time together to address, some of that comes down to saving streets that you want to get them before they get that bad, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and so, that, that's the, the temporary fix until those streets can be addressed as part of the long-term plan. But, yeah, this year's project will be, will include paving a couple of those streets that are in really bad disrepair. So, we'll have a three-inch grind and pave on Voskabel and South Lenore, as well as digouts on Bectold. And so, we'll keep incorporating those plans, but temporary fixes will be, will address the, the problems for now.
Do you have a rough estimate of when the Voskabel project will happen?
We're anticipating that later in the fall. We had a meeting about it today, and, yeah, I think it will, it will come probably sometime around August, September.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Andrea? All right, thank you very much. Moving on to Finance. Manny?
The only-
You need to-
Sorry.
The only update I have right now is that we're working on getting a Finance Committee set for Wednesday, May 17th, and outside of that.
Thank you. Any questions from Counsel? Moving on to Police Department Chief.
Don't drop it. I think we need to budget for another mic. Nothing to add to the, the PD report. We're slowly getting our, our staffing levels up, waiting for one of our recruits to graduate from Santa Rosa Academy. We had another person in backgrounds graduate from the Delta College Public Safety Academy, and we should be able to bring her on in the next few weeks, so. But other than that, I'm open for questions.
Counsel, any questions for the Chief?
No, just a standing thank you.
And please say welcome back to Sergeant Brady, who's here on reserve.
He's going to be doing reserve work for us. I tasked him with, I had registered us for participating in National Night Out this year, which we haven't been able to do for a little bit. And we got the application packet, and might as well start putting the word out. It'll be August 1st, it's a Tuesday evening, and we're looking to see if the city will allow us to park across the street. And we'll have, we'll have an event for the community and the kids, and have the officers out there and see if we can get to know each other a little bit better. So, that's one of his first tasks to do.
Great. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to Public Works.
I just figured I'll take the stand tonight, make things a little easier. Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Just a couple of updates outside of the information already provided in the, the monthly report tonight. The section of steel line, it's another one of those four-inch steel lines that's part of our older infrastructure in town. We replaced about 60, 70 feet of that, and that project is complete, so pleased to announce that. That's just one of those areas that it seems like we're digging up in a couple of months.
Where was that?
It's in vicinity of the Bittenbender tank. So, it serves a small portion of the community, but given its location and its age, it is, like I said, once again, it's prone to issues. So, it's good to have that kind of crossed off the list. And we are irrigating now. We have brought the irrigation online for the city facilities and parks. It's got warm all of a sudden, so while the grass is green, we want to try to keep it that way. So, we're irrigating regularly. And another, just another little fun fact, I've been working with Andrea to purchase a Tobahine Variable Message Board, which is something we all think has been kind of long overdue for the city to have on hand. Our goal is to acquire one this fiscal year, and budget for an additional one the following fiscal year. That gives us the ability to give motorists and people on the roadway's advance notice of projects. So, if we're going to be impacting an area and it's a planned event, we can give them a heads up. If there's an event, like a disaster or a fire, and there's evacuations or things, we can, we can post it, we can make people aware. So, it's solar-powered match, and we can deploy it pretty quickly. It's got an onboard programming. It's three lines of text with, I want to say, 24 characters, so you can get a pretty involved message, or you can keep it simple, slow, whatever, whatever the, the application. But I think that it would be a valuable tool for advising the public of situations during projects or even events, you know? We could post it on the, on the north side of town for people coming in during the rodeo, during the, during the parade. It just, it's got a lot of different uses, so we're pretty excited about that. Other than that, I'm available for any questions or comments.
Anybody have questions for Ken?
Just, I noticed that when they were cleaning the streets, the street sweeper was coordinated to come directly behind it. And I, I noticed the planning that went into that, and it really made a difference. So, yeah, within 15 minutes after weed eating and blowing, the street sweeper was right behind it. Where in the past I saw that it would sit in the roadway for a bit until somebody came along, so.
Yeah, we've got, we've got, we're fortunate to have a really good, solid crew in the Public Works Maintenance Department. I can't say enough about them, but they all work really well together. They're all invested in the community, and they all love certain where they live, and we have chosen to raise their families, so. Just that, that level of coordination, a lot of times, it, it just happens organically, but-
You can tell, and it's appreciated.
Yeah, thank you. Pass it on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Andrea?
I'd like to just add to Ken's report on the variable message boards.
Microphone.
Whoa, sorry. We, we're utilizing the Local Streets and Roads Program Funding, which is an SB1 funding source to make the variable message boards.
Sounds like a really good idea, too.
Trying to get with the times.
Communication to the public is always a good thing. All right, Utilities. I don't see Scott here tonight, so Ken, or Andrea, who's going to field Utilities tonight?
We'll talk to you now.
If you have any questions, you can certainly try to ask and answer in the absence of the chair.
Okay.
That's why I added that fun fact about Bittenbender water line.
All right.
And I know that the wastewater crew was out working on the issue that has been going on over here at the Chamber, and they had a lot of issues. So, I know that that project is also completed, so.
Any questions or comments from Counsel? I will say, nice to see that our reservoir capacity is still at 100%. That's a good feeling going into May. And I thank all of the departments for their reports. These are fantastic. All right, with that, we'll move on to City Council announcements, communications, and reports. Madge, have you got any reports this evening?
Yes, I do. I think the main one is the Solid Waste Management Authority, otherwise known as Hazmat, or Mendocino Recycle, met on April 20th, and they approved, I was the only vote against it, but they approved three contracts. So, one of them is with Ukiah Waste Inc., which is basically a branch of C&amp;S, which is the hauler for the whole Ukiah Valley and a good deal of the county. They are going to run the Hazmat operation there at the plant, on Plant Road in Ukiah. Another contract is with the City of Ukiah to administer and manage that contract and to report directly to the Ensois Board of Directors, which is five of us, two county reps, and me, and a Fort Bragg representative, and a, and a Pointe Arena representative, I hope that is. I was, I voted no because there was extremely little information about what kind of service would actually be provided. But the City of Ukiah administrators said, well, that's what you're harrying us to do, and in the next couple of months, we will flush that out, and we'll tell you what the services are going to be, and you, the board, will direct what does and doesn't get covered. But essentially, you know, what we're all concerned is that all of the remote collections that we used to have have been basically non-existent for the last year or year and a half. There hasn't been staff, and now presumably, there will be staff and there will be oversight. So, I will wait and see how it all comes out. But I was, I was just disappointed that we didn't have more specificity in awarding those contracts. I think that is the main report I have. The other things have already met previously, so.
Thank you. Suprina?
I have a report, but I had a request first. For some of us, we're, we're serving a lot of different committees and boards, and I was wondering if, like, Dolores, you asked us for, what does our calendar look like for the next couple of months? Is it possible to put, like, a calendar on the city's website so that, so that if a meeting gets canceled, or the public wants to attend a meeting, it would be easy enough to just click on calendar and say, okay, what meetings does the city have going on this day that are open to the public? Or, or you could even mention the meeting and say, not closed, not open to the public or whatnot. But I would be able to verify, as would anybody in the public be able to verify, if there's a meeting that day. I think that would be really helpful.
Not the first one, most have been happening.
Yeah, be able to just click on calendar, that would, that would be super helpful.
Absolutely.
Okay. And then, my report for Mendocino Transit Authority, we met today. We were talking about electric buses, and Willetts has the only two electric buses in the fleet. They're working out very well in Willetts. We're happy with them, and we're looking to add four more, and hope to have them on the road in February and March of next year. Fort Bragg is going to be receiving two of them, and Ukiah will be receiving two, but we were the first ones, and it's working out really well. And then, we had a review of our Executive Director, Jacob King, who's also a Willetts resident, and he had the unanimous support of the board, and received a glowing review. And then, Counsel, Mayor Connie, you had mentioned before about the transportation study, and the possibility of, well, the discussion around how that's going to affect, for example, Mendocino Transit Authority.
The unmet needs study?
For the unmet needs study that was just done. We know that Brook Trails, Covelo, and Leightonville are closest neighbors. We were, in that study, they were talking about what their needs are and how they might be met. And it's wonderful that, that we have this study, but we all kept asking, where is the money going to come from? We're, we're putting the, the horse before the cart, so to speak. And now, it's kind of evolving, and we're starting to see that it looks like really MTA is going to have to find a way to either meet the needs of these people, or some, MCOC will be in a position of voting to essentially take maybe up to 5% of MTA's funding. And as we all know, City Willetts, if somebody came in and said, we're going to take 5% of your funding, and we've got it all budgeted out, something has to give. So, as an organization for Mendocino Transit Authority, we're kind of worried about what that might look like for the public. What are we, what are we going to have to give up? We know that a compromise is inevitable, and it's going to be, trying to figure out what that compromise looks like. What are we going to give up to make this happen? But I know that each of the cities are going to be having discussions about- But I know that each of the cities are going to be having discussions about how they want their representative to vote on this particular issue. And you represent us on the MCAG board. And one of the things that was mentioned in the MTA meeting today was that when the individuals that were presenting the study to the MCAG, they anticipated that there might be some directors on the MCAG board that were going to be like, "Oh, no, wait, stop, this is not okay." And they, they didn't feel that they received any kind of serious criticism or pushback from the MCAG. And so, that signaled Mendocino Transit Authority, though, we're a little concerned about, are they just being cautious because they want more information? So, yeah, I'm curious kind of how our city feels on the issue so that, yeah. So, just something to think about.
It surprises me to hear that they didn't think there was pushback because it was...
That's what was presented to us.
Yeah, I mean, because there was discussion and also, it was unusual for them to present their findings so early since the final report isn't due until the end of August. So, it sort of felt like they were testing the ground and it did, it did generate conversation, so.
Okay. So, yeah, so if Mendocino Transit Authority can't provide services to these outlying areas, MCAG would be in the position of deciding whether or not to create CTSA, which is what MTA is. So, they would create another CTSA and they would potentially take up to 5% of our funding and that CTSA would have their own board and would disperse funds in these outlying areas.
Although, one of the suggestions was if they went ahead and chose MTA, since it already is a CTSA, there would be no, no need to create a new CTSA, since it would already operate as that. And then, the question was, so are you going to put more duties and responsibilities on Jacob when he's already running MTA? And that created conversation.
Where would we get, no funding dollars are associated with this, so it's like, do more, but we're not going to give you any more money. And so, something has to be cut. I mean, do we take away so that we conserve the outlying areas? Do we make it so that transportation can come? For example, you know, you can get from Brook Trails to Willets, but then the consequences, maybe you can get here, but then those people who want to get to medical appointments in the Bay Area, we can't provide any kind of connecting transportation, maybe from Ukiah to Sonoma County where people can, can find connections. Something is going to have to give, so just some thought.
Yeah, absolutely. And believe me, I think everybody on the MCAG board was having those thoughts, so. Anything else? Okay. Larry, do you have any? Jerry?
Don't really have anything other than the, LAPCO is next Monday meeting and then Big City's meeting in Fort Bragg is on the 12th of May, if you want to head over there.
The Redwood Empire Division.
I'll be attending MCAG next Monday and I attended a museum advisory board emergency meeting last Thursday or Friday, now I can't remember. And we had two points of business to, first was to approve the strategic planning document and second was to approve a letter to the Board of Supervisors requesting the Bitten Bender Endowment be transferred to the Community Foundation. It was unanimous approval for both from the board and it was a quick in and out on that. And that's all I have. All right, good and welfare, anybody? It's funny!
I was going to say, the weather, the weather is funny.
All right, no closed session tonight, so at 8:04, I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you all.
There's our good and welfare.
Thank you.
That's the welfare.